All right, good evening. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you to everyone who has come out this evening. Do we have any council comments? Hearing none, City Manager.
Sure, Council. I'd just like to give a thanks to everyone in the community who this past weekend was a little bit on edge about rumors that they had heard on Facebook about protests and riots in the city of Bristol and in Washington County. I appreciate everyone willing to listen to us and trust us that we were doing what was right to protect not only people but property here in the city of Bristol. It's the open lines of communication that really allow us to do what we need to do when it comes to situations like that. And with everyone being open and reaching out to us, it really made our jobs a lot easier. I hope the people in Bristol realize that we're here, we have their best interest at heart, we want to make sure everybody's safe. We also want to make sure anyone that wants to voice their opinion can do that safely. And we had that opportunity this weekend with plenty of law enforcement around in the event something nefarious did happen, but it didn't. So, you know, I appreciate everybody working with us, and it's a testament to the people of Bristol of how well we worked together throughout that past week.
Thank you. Item C is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. No one has signed up for that, and I also noticed no one has signed up for any of the other items that we might be discussing tonight. Did anyone want to sign up and not sign up? If not, item D is adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion and a second.
A move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion for Mr. Farnham, second for Mr. Hartley. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Regular agenda, item one, public hearing for an amendment to the fiscal year 2020 budget, open hearing, staff comment.
The hearing members of council, on May 29th, 2019, the Bristol, Virginia City Council adopted the current year fiscal year 20 budget. The proposed items are an additional appropriation to the original budget. State code does require a public hearing and meeting notice for any amendment to the budget greater than 1% of total expenditures. The advertisement appeared in the June 1st, 2020 Bristol Herald Courier. Prior to this fiscal year, July 1 debt payments have been sent via wire on July 1. The receiving bank requires that going forward these monies be received at least 24 hours prior to the due date making the payment due in June. This is a one-time budget adjustment, has no cash flow effect. This item was discussed with council in January of 2020 and in the February 11th, 2020 council meeting during the unassigned fund balance discussion. These payments are in accordance with the city's debt schedule as presented to council.
All right, thank you. No one signed up for public comments, so we'll close the hearing. Item two, public hearing regarding fiscal year 2020, CDBG Annual Action Plan Amendment. We'll open the hearing, staff comment.
Good evening. The city of Bristol is an annual recipient of federal funding through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. The entitlement monies must be spent on projects that principally benefit low to moderate income persons and families. Staff is requesting an amendment to the 2019-2020 CDBG Annual Action Plan to add an additional $159,013 in CDBG CV funding, which is from the CARES Act, to be used to prepare, prevent, and respond to infectious diseases such as COVID-19. Staff is also requesting $25,000 in 2019 unused funding be reallocated to respond to the pandemic as well. Any substantial amendment to the annual action plan requires a public hearing prior to action by city council. The CDBG Citizen Participation Plan has also been revised to incorporate a shortened comment period for CDBG CV funds.
All right, thank you very much. No one signed up for public comments, so we'll close the hearing. Item three, supplemental appropriation in the amount of $1,485,406, staff report.
Mayor and members of council, this is the action item for the previous public hearing. Staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Okay. No one signed up for public comment, so I'll be looking for a motion and a second to approve the supplemental appropriation as presented.
A move that we approve the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
Motion by the Vice Mayor and second by Mr. Farnham, council discussion. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Item four, release funds from commitment from the debt service reserve accounts per the city debt service payment schedule, staff report.
Gentlemen, hold on just a moment. I think we had a comment that should have probably been held at the public hearing piece on number two from Brad Adams. I'm not sure if he didn't sign up or not.
I didn't have anybody signed up.
Okay. I don't know if y'all want to take that at some point.
We can't, let us get through this item and then we'll do that. So, let's see, so staff report on item four.
Mayor and members of council, on June 12th, 2019, council approved $1,653,823 of general fund monies and $140,851 of solid waste disposal fund monies to a debt service reserve account. These funds can be released from commitment by a major, I'm sorry, by a majority vote of city council. $653,823 of general fund monies and $122,484 of, I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong, $122,484 of solid waste disposal monies from prior debt savings are to be used to offset fiscal year 21 debt payments. This is consistent with the debt service payment schedule that has been presented quarterly to council for the debt payment plan. $1,019,778 will remain in the general fund debt service reserve account and $20,905 will remain in the solid waste disposal fund debt service reserve account after fiscal year 21 budgeted debt payments are made to be used for future escalating debt payments. Staff recommends that council release $653,823 of general fund monies and $122,484 of solid waste disposal fund monies from committed status in the debt service reserve account. A majority vote of council is required to release these funds from committed status.
All right, thank you very much. So, I'm looking for a, there's no public comments, I'm going to look for a motion and a second to release $653,823 of general fund monies and $122,484 of solid waste disposal fund monies from committed status in the debt service reserve accounts.
A move that we release the funds as you specify.
Second.
So, second from the Vice Mayor, or motion by the Vice Mayor and second from Mr. Farnham, council discussion.
My only questions and comments are, this keeps us in line and on track with the way that we've scheduled to take care and handle this debt.
Yes, sir.
This is money that was set aside for debt only.
Yes, sir.
And we all agreed that we would pull it out as needed to make debt payments, but is this a premature pull or are we on track and on schedule with the timeline in which we needed?
Yes, yes. You are releasing these funds from commitment now, they will be used in the fiscal year 21 for the payment.
So, we're releasing them now, but they will be used in '21?
Yes.
Is there a reason why, the early release?
I just wanted to get them on this agenda. I didn't want to wait until after fiscal year 21 had begun to release those funds from commitment.
Okay, so it's going to stay in reserve until you need it, it's just you want the authorization to pull it when you need it?
Yes, yes. And a piece of, these monies are listed in the fiscal year 21 budget, so that's consistent with releasing them from commitment.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
All right, so before we get to item five, we head up public.
You'll need to reopen that public hearing.
Okay. So, we'll back up and we will, let me read it. Open a public hearing regarding fiscal year 2020, CDBG Annual Action Plan Amendment. So, the hearing is open and we will hear public comment.
Hello, good afternoon. I am Brad Adams and I'm the Board Chair for Discover Bristol at the Bristol Chamber of Commerce. I apologize for any confusion and not coming up earlier if I made a mistake. Beth Reinhardt would typically be here, but she is out of town, so she has a letter that I'm going to read, and then I'll have a couple of just basic comments, and then if you all have any questions, obviously, I'll be happy to answer. So, the letter is, Dear Ms. Tolton and members of council, as a potential community development block grant recipient, we respectfully request that Bristol, Virginia consider inclusion of Discover Bristol, the tourism marketing organization for the city. In your action plan for funding through the CDBG coronavirus supplemental as provided by the CARES Act, we understand that these funds are limited and that there is a great need, but many of the small businesses in our city are suffering from the lack of visitor spending due to the COVID-19 shutdown. We believe that the very immediate needs facing the businesses during this reopening phase can be alleviated through a targeted focused approach to bringing visitors back to Bristol in a very safe manner. The research shows that currently visitors are looking for a drivable destination that is deemed safe with an abundance of outdoor recreation available. Our businesses and our city tax base have seen an immediate impact from the shutdown and diminished visitor spending in restaurants, retail establishments, and hotels. The quicker we can infuse spending back into these businesses, the more likely they are all to succeed and be sustainable long term. The COVID-19 health crisis has had a devastating disproportionate impact on the travel and tourism industry, including Discover Bristol that is funded through a combination of local hotel room taxes and private sector contributions. The stay-at-home orders and social distancing measures that were put in place in response to the outbreak have abruptly upended private sector finances and severely reduced hotel room tax revenue. Discover Bristol is a 501(c)(6) and because of that status, we have not been eligible for any of the federal stimulus monies. According to current projections, these problems are only expected to get worse in the weeks and months ahead. According to data released by the U.S. Travel Association, in partnership with Tourism Economics, approximately eight million jobs in the travel industry will be lost by the end of April. Accounting for a third of all job losses in the U.S. travel industry, losses alone will wipe out over half a trillion dollars from the economy, leading to an $80 billion decline in tax revenue this year nationally. Travel and tourism mean a great deal to both Bristol, Tennessee and Bristol, Virginia, generating 1.8 billion in annual spending and supporting 15,290 jobs across Virginia's ninth congressional district alone. These jobs are at risk of being lost permanently if more is done to support the needs of DMOs and small travel businesses, many of which support low and medium income communities. The CARES Act provides $5 billion in CDBG CV funds to help communities respond to COVID-19, including efforts to avoid any job losses caused by social distancing measures. The Act also gives the HUD Secretary the ability to waive any regulation that would prevent grant recipients from fully responding to the effects of the outbreak. In response to similar crises in the past, HUD has provided waivers for grantees to use CDBG funding for travel promotion and tourism management. Further, given the unique challenges facing the travel industry, it is appropriate to help DMOs and small travel businesses keep workers employed, particularly since many of them have not been able to access the PPP program, Paycheck Protection Program. As we continue to act in the interest of the public, health, and safety, it is important that we not allow DMOs and small travel related business to wither at the vine and close permanently. The resulting job losses would make the road to economic recovery much longer and only put low and medium income communities further behind. Therefore, it is critical that you consider the needs of DMOs and small travel related businesses in your CDBG CV action plan. We respectfully request you consider some level of funding to Discover Bristol through this crisis that allows for such a waiver request. We would be grateful for any support through this funding opportunity. Thank you for your time and attention. Sincerely, Beth Reinhardt. And just real short, I just wanted to point out or reiterate a couple of these things. The DMO, it was not eligible for any PPP help whatsoever, so we haven't been able to utilize any of the federal funding. The funds would be used for a short-term targeted plan to attract tourism by communicating that we are a safe and drivable destination. People aren't ready to be in airports yet, but they'll drive, and we have a lot of opportunities with outdoor recreation. Hopefully, these funds and the marketing plan can speed up recovery and maybe help some businesses stay alive. Obviously, we're grateful for any support, and we remain grateful for any other support that you have given us over the years. It's greatly appreciated, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak out and make the request.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions we want to address right now?
Yeah, I got a couple. How, do you know how the money would specifically be spent if you were to get any?
We are developing that plan now, and of course, we have just hired Christopher Perrin as the new director of Discover Bristol, so he's working on that. It's a fine line between when you start that program and you're, so that you're not considered insensitive to the public and what is going on. So, that plan is being developed, but it is specifically going to be for short-term recruitment of tourism to show that we are a safe community and that we are a drivable community, so that we can maximize what those dollars will do for us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, so we will go ahead and reclose the hearing, and we'll go on to item five on the agenda, which is discussion of Bristol's allocation for the federal coronavirus aid relief and economic securities CARES Act of 2020. City Manager.
Counsel, I know everybody's heard a lot about the CARES Act over the past several months and how localities would get funding for the CARES Act. On June 1st, we received a payment of $1.462 million from the Richmond in regards to that funding. We, there's a potential for further funding in the future, but we do not have any idea as to when that will come, but we do know that there is a potential for that. So, how do we deal with $1.4 million that has come into the city for the coronavirus relief funds? So, here is what we have. The fire department CARES funds, they have $8,730 of revenue available. FEMA funds, there is no expenditure cutoff, but there's a 25% local match. CDBG funds, we can use through 2022, and we received $159,013 for the CDBG funds. And four, local allocation of the federal CARES coronavirus relief funds of $1.462 million. So, as I've mentioned previously, we receive these funds on June 1st. We establish a separate bank account to house those funds in. Not only did we establish a separate bank account, we also established a separate fund, Fund 35. At tonight's meeting, or at the June 23rd meeting, we'll appropriate fiscal year 20 expenditures, which are approximately $20,000 as it related to COVID expenses thus far. In July 2020, we'll appropriate fiscal year 21 expenditures, probably multiple appropriations as we move throughout the first half of fiscal year 21. The $1.462 million is 50% of what we are entitled to receive. The second installment, which I mentioned previously, we do not have any information yet on when we'll receive that dispersment. Dispersment is based on the locality's population, and we've received guidance in regards to the coronavirus relief funds from Secretary of Finance Aubrey Lane. These are one-time monies that are to be expended by December 30th of 2020. We can only cover costs that are, one, necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus disease 2019, or COVID-19. Two, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27th, 2020. And three, were incurred during the period that begins on March 1, 2020 and ends on December 30th, 2020. So, basically what that means, if it was budgeted for, this money cannot cover it, and if it was not budgeted for, and we've expended for it, it has to be coronavirus related. Funds may not be used to fill shortfalls in government revenue to cover expenditures that would not otherwise qualify under the statute. Revenue replacement is not a permissible use of the funds, and due to the amount of these funds, they will be subject to single audit specific program testing. So, we know upfront that these items will be audited as we expend these items. We have a committee that's been formed to identify these needs. It's myself, Ms. Fradlin, the senior accountant, Cameron Phillips, the police chief, fire chief, and the fire department office administrator, the CDBG coordinator, director of public works, sheriff, and director of social services. You see the makeup of this mainly because there are separate pots of money that we want to make sure that we're not double dipping on and that we are expending the money in the right way. For example, the fire department has FEMA funds that are available. If we can buy something that the fire department needs either through CDBG funds or through the CARES Act funds, we should buy it through that because FEMA requires a 25% match instead of us having to put in our own general fund money. We also want to make sure that we're not overlapping on projects and everyone is communicating as to what the expenses are that will be anticipated and needed to cover the coronavirus incidences. And this, we have had one committee meeting this week, yesterday, the committee has now a form that has been sent to all department heads advising them that we need to know what their expenses are in related to coronavirus, and this first round are for expenses of $10,000 and greater. As we expend those funds and as we review those requests from department heads, if there are funds that are left over, we will then drop that threshold down a little bit more in order to potentially expend the $1.4 million. Eligible expenses are medical expenses related to coronavirus, public health expenses related to coronavirus, payroll expenses substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19. So, that does not mean we can say that any position is related to coronavirus. That position will more than likely have to be repurposed to substantially dedicate those services to either mitigating COVID-19 or responding to COVID-19 in some form or fashion. Economic support in connection with the COVID-19 public health emergency, and what that means is we do have the ability to set up potential grants or loans for businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19. We have already looked at several different counties that are a few steps ahead of us in regards to receiving the funds and how they plan on distributing those funds and the parameters that they have set up. So, we'll be borrowing some practices from those counties and communities to set up our parameters for our local businesses here in Bristol. These funds are not eligible for payroll expenses for work not substantially dedicated to mitigating or responded to COVID-19 or previously budgeted items prior to March 27th of 2020. So, what's next? They will have approximately a week to get us back through a request. The department heads will, the committee will then reconvene, go over the department heads' request. By committee consensus, we will begin to look at each one of those items to determine, one, whether or not they meet the criteria, and two, which pot of money is best used to expend funds in order to accomplish their goal. And then, on June 23rd, the appropriation will occur for the fiscal year 20 expenditures, which have already occurred, which are about $20,000, a little bit less. And July 2020, we will make those recommendations to council for you all to consider and add any additional comments to those. We'll be discussing those with you prior to that meeting so that you'll know the route we're going, and then later on in the year, we'll have additional appropriations to deal with some of those expenses. Any questions that I can answer in regards to this?
Yeah, I got a few.
Okay.
So, can you, can you kind of go through some examples that you see in your mind where this would apply? So, you can start from some of the categories like the grants and the loans.
Okay.
So, you got a lot of businesses that were affected.
Right.
Right? So, if they applied for some of these funds, what would be a project that you would think would be applicable?
Well, I think it depends on each business and what they, how their business has been impacted by COVID-19 and what their response is going to be. And we'll have to look at those as they produce those applications to us as to whether or not, what they are using those funds for would be COVID-related funds.
Okay, so let me throw out some examples, so let's get a conversation. So, let's say restaurants are heavily impacted, right? And let's say we opened up the streets down here to allow a couple of restaurants to put outdoor seating. So, they wanted to expand their business, say, up to put more outdoor seating somewhere that would do the same purpose. Would that apply?
Well, I think you can liberally construe the rules, and that could potentially apply. I don't think we want to go to the point where we would have to defend their decision in expending those funds with the federal government because they will, these will be audited, and we could potentially have to pay them back. So, I think it has to be very narrowly tailored to fit the COVID-19. While I understand the argument that they may want to add outdoor dining, is that truly related to the COVID-19 pandemic? And that's something we'll have to look at, how other communities are handling it. And when I talk other communities, I'm talking Fairfax County, Loudoun County, they've already received these funds, or Fairfax County has, they've already received these funds, they've already put these plans in place, and we're looking at how they are implementing, how they're helping small businesses in order to meet those COVID-19 issues. For example, low hanging fruit, PPE, face masks, face shields, things like that. That's easy for any department to say, we need those types of things within the department. Thermal imaging devices at city hall or at other city facilities, very easy to say that meets a COVID-19 issue. Potentially a vestibule out here in city hall that we could lock down relatively quickly and maintain openness to city hall to some degree with having someone there available during working hours so people could come in and conduct business right through a window. I think we can, for safety's sake, I think we could argue that that would be a COVID-19 related issue. In regards to outside businesses, I think what, at least in my mind, and Ms. Fradlin and other communities may have different things that they would weigh it on, I would think marketing purposes would be one reason that they need funds to market their business again so people come out, explain to people how they're being safe. explain to people how they're being safe, what they're doing to keep customers safe. And that's just one of the things that I can think of off the top of my head.
So if you did the marketing, so as an example, there'd have to be some kind of a time limit because if they market harder at the beginning to try to get their business built back up, as their business builds back up, if they got back to, say, ninety to hundred percent capacity of what they were at before, you would say, okay, that's, that's kind of it. You're back. So you couldn't, like, extend that time period out for.
Well, it's not a time period that we're looking at.
No, I'm saying, my point is, you've got to put some parameters. This having money doesn't have any parameters. So not having parameters defined is going to be the problem, right?
Well, I think that's what I said. We wanted to look at these parameters to figure out what those parameters are, looking at other communities.
So will that get published?
We're not at that point.
So that'll get published?
That'll get published.
To everybody, so?
Yes.
So parameters like, I want to advertise more.
Yes, right.
Okay, well, if you're going to do that, that's fine, but you can't get the money for six months.
Right. No, what they would apply for, they say, I need ten thousand dollars, is what they do. It's not a time limit of where they can just continually come back to us. They say, I need ten thousand dollars to market. I need ten thousand dollars for outdoor seating. I need twenty-five thousand for whatever the case is. And then we have to verify that that is an appropriate use of those COVID funds.
They want an automatic infrared as people entered their business.
Right.
They could apply. That'd be direct.
Right.
PPE direct.
Right.
These would be for grants, not loans, correct?
Correct.
Let me ask a question. So I know in the portion of your presentation that said, as far as using the funds for, using the funds for government uses, it could not be to cover payroll that's not substantially related to coronavirus directly. So say, back, kind of tying that thought in with the question about giving these grants to businesses, could they, could they, you think someone came and said, hey, we need to be able to make payroll because we haven't got money, would that be, their business, their job was affected by coronavirus? But, you know what I'm saying?
I can't read the exact language from the, from the guidance we got from Secretary Lane. When you're discussing expenses associated with the provision of economic support in connection with COVID nineteen, such as expenditures related to the provision of grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruption caused by required closures. As Mr. Eads mentioned earlier, if we were going to follow in line with some of what we've seen across the state, the parameters that Councilman Mumpower is talking about, I'm going to copy from Loudoun County, for example. They, they said to apply for these grant funds, you couldn't have received any other federal COVID nineteen money. Had to have two or fewer W-two employees. They limit, or they identified your, your revenues had to be less than a certain amount. So they were really clear that they're targeting a certain size business. And then, it's my understanding, per their information that's available online, they, they then gathered those applicants and actually picked them randomly from a pool. I guess, in my opinion, just my opinion, so that they weren't showing favoritism to any one business that met their criteria. So those will be the type discussions we'll be having at the committee level about if, if there's funds available for something like that, how are we going to move forward with that? That being said, once those criteria are set and vetted by the city manager and council, then that will be very public, very public.
Does, can I answer your question?
I think so.
Kind of to piggyback on your point, Ms. Fradlin. Does the Commissioner of Revenue or anybody have any sense of, like, business sizes when they fill out the business licenses, have anything? So you could see, you know, like, you mentioned, I think Fairfax or Loudoun, the example of two employees. I mean, are, how many businesses like that are in Bristol? So we could get a sense of, when we set the guidelines, we know how many people probably would qualify and try to, you know, from that point. Because you don't want to set it too high or too low, you know, to, you want to make good use of the money. And I would say you just, you know, that whole point and, and, you know, to try to use it to supplement people that have kind of fallen through the cracks. I know I've had people call and tell them about this or that or different programs that I knew of and try to direct them places. But, you know, for whatever reason, the way their business was organized or things like that, they said, you know, they didn't qualify for certain pots of money. So I think anything we can do to help businesses though, especially those that may have missed out somewhere along the way, I would highly encourage that.
With a position here in the city where we're out interfacing with businesses, right, trying to get them back up to full business levels as quick as possible, those could be directly related to COVID nineteen. That's the only reason that the person on our staff is being told to go do that. That would be.
Yes.
Something could be covered, right? Any kind of overtime that's being spent, whether it be Public Works or Police trying to do certain things that's special to keeping the public safe during a, you know, a COVID nineteen kind of pandemic, would that apply?
I think it depends on the situation because, one, if it's budgeted for, if it would previously budgeted for, if overtime was.
It wouldn't apply.
It wouldn't necessarily apply. In my opinion, there are two provisions in the guidance that we received that kind of somewhat contradict each other. But, so we're still trying to get guidance as to which one outweighs the other because one piece of the guidance says this money can be used for current public safety positions. I don't know if it says current exactly, but, but then on the flip side of it, it says the money cannot be used for positions that are budgeted for. And so there's a little bit of contradiction as to that guidance as to what we can use that for.
Anytime the EMS, Fire Department, anybody's responded to a COVID nineteen or something, would that, would that apply?
Not that it's already responded, simply because we've already budgeted to pay them to respond.
Anything that rear-view mirrors.
And potentially, anything going forward does not necessarily count because we are funding fire and police to a certain extent. Now, for example, knock on wood, hope this doesn't happen in Bristol, we have a tremendous outbreak in the city, and we've got five hundred people with COVID nineteen in the city. And we've got significant areas of the city that are infected that would require some sort of police oversight or more EMS response than normal. Then that could potentially fall within those parameters. But I think we've got to be very careful when those types of things happen as to how we expend those funds.
If a business wanted to buy special microbial-type, you know, countertops and things like that, you know.
Copper countertop.
You know, whatever, more conducive to killing the virus, that would be a direct.
That, to me, that would meet that COVID, now, that's my opinion. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the federal opinion, but.
Would there be any clawbacks to this grant? Is there anything that the businesses have to know as far as, if you don't do X, you get to get the money back?
Well, we've got to look at that step as to how we're going to handle that because if, if for some reason we give funds and those funds aren't not used for COVID, are we doing this on a reimbursement basis, or do we know yet, these funds?
I think what we.
CDBG is on a reimbursement basis, so we get to see that upfront.
I think, and we're very, very, very early in the discussion of grants to businesses, but it is, is a part of the discussion. But I think what we've talked about to this point has been, if you have somehow allowing businesses to apply that meet the criteria, and then, then they can use a grant. I, I don't think we've talked at the level of actually the per expenditure, per business expenditure. I think our thoughts were that if they could prove they meet the guidance and we set up those application criteria, that it would be a grant to that business. Not, not reimbursement for expenditure. And I will tell you, we have to be careful about that because all of a sudden, we got to make sure we've got the staff in-house that can handle the documentation of what we're dispersing.
That was going to be my question. If we went the route of being able to issue this money as grants to businesses, do we have the staffing to be able to go through the applications, issue, and do all the follow-up that'd be required? And is it right that it's about one point four million? If, if we're not using it on that, if, like, we don't have anything else to use it on before December thirtieth, is it if we don't use it, we lose it, basically?
It's, the guidance right now is, it has to be used by then, or it has, it's returned.
Okay.
So we're going to have a plan in place and make sure that we're following that plan.
You said there was a second installment at some point in the future, undetermined.
That's correct.
So my question there, do you know if it'll be the same amount? If, if they just split it in half, or?
We anticipate it being the same amount, but we truly don't have any guidance on that.
I'm going to read the only guidance I have seen from the Department of Accounts. The disposition of the remaining federal cares coronavirus relief funds has not been determined at this time.
So just, if you had to make a guess, and the CFO, I trust your guess is a lot more than some people's facts.
Mr. Eads was going to guess.
If you had to take a guess, since, since this first half is for the first half of the fiscal year, would, would logic dictate that the next half will be for the next half of the fiscal year?
No, because the legislation says that these monies have to be expended by.
All the money has to be expended by December thirtieth.
December thirtieth. I was on a conference call with Senator Kane, and that was one of my questions, not exactly that specific, but to the point of, is there a way that we can use this money differently than COVID nineteen expenditures? And as they have another stimulus package, I think the House has sent over another stimulus package to the Senate that is basically sitting there at the moment. I don't think the Senate has taken it up yet. But Senator Kane, and I know other senators across the nation, they realize that local governments have unique needs, and they're trying to figure out ways that local governments could use these funds other than COVID nineteen-related expenses.
But just like, correct me if I'm wrong, but did not Congress go back and revisit the Payroll Protection Act and extend, I mean, they made, after saying you had eight weeks to.
They had extended that, right.
They've extended it. So it's, at least, it's theoretically possible.
I mean, the correct answer is, we don't know.
Yeah, but they've done it for other programs, so they might potentially do it.
So where does the, where does the budget, since we're going to get into that next, where we have significant cuts that have been made because of the COVID nineteen impact, right? Where does this apply to cuts you might have to make? Without that, you're going to lose positions. You're going to lose expenses, you know, for travel and all kinds of stuff. So does some of that apply to the cuts you're having to make because of the budget?
Well, I think all five of us has talked about this over the past week in regards to how to use these COVID nineteen funds. The budget you all have in front of you tonight does not incorporate any of these funds in that budget tonight, simply because we don't, we don't feel comfortable saying, and I don't think council right now, based on conversations I've had with all five, have really come to a consensus as to how to use these funds. My anticipation is, at the July first organizational meeting, we'll have a call meeting after that to supplementally appropriate these funds for certain positions that will be repurposed simply for COVID nineteen issues.
Okay, so the question now becomes, if you budget versus you don't budget, then if you wait till July first and you decide what to use the funds for, if you went ahead and budgeted for those cuts before that point, then can you then not use it in that case? If you had waited, you know, you see my point here, that then you had to make the cuts because, you know, the revenues aren't covering expenses, then you could use the COVID to offset the expenditures that you're seeing that that's directly related to the impact?
Because the, whatever position that money is going to has to be re, let's take position X. And let's say position X is in a position now where they go out and meet businesses across the city, and not only across the city, businesses that are coming in from across the United States to potentially come to Bristol. Position X would have to be repurposed if position X is on the, on the, is not in this current fiscal year twenty-one budget. Position X would have to be repurposed that that position could only deal with businesses that have been impacted by COVID nineteen. So if a new company was coming into the city that had nothing to do with COVID nineteen, then position X could not meet with that new company. This person would have to be directly involved with businesses. Now, with that being said, every business in Bristol has had an impact because of COVID nineteen. So there, there's no reason that this person shouldn't be busy simply because there's plenty of things to do, plenty of information to get out to businesses, to help these businesses recover from COVID nineteen. Not only help them recover, but potentially help them prepare for the next shutdown, if there is one, if the pandemic comes back in the winter. So there are plenty of things that this person can do to help facilitate businesses through this COVID nineteen pandemic. I don't know if that answered the question, but it has to be narrowly tailored for specific COVID nineteen issues.
Right, and I, my question's very specific. So this budget had a list of positions, right, that was having to be cut because of the reduction of the city's tax base because of the COVID nineteen. So do these monies then can be applied to offset that cutback? That's what I'm saying. Can you salvage?
I don't think it's offsetting the cutback. What you're doing is.
To prevent the cutback from having to occur. Can you save a position?
You're saving a position, but the position's being repurposed. It's not the same position that it was on June thirtieth as it's going to be on July one. You're saving a person, but you may not be saving the exact job description.
Yeah, my understanding is, and you mentioned you had conversation with Senator Kane. I sat in with one of those conference calls that he had with the chamber. And I think the point was, in the legislation they have before him, they want that flexibility with the funds to make up for lost revenues, which is what you're saying. I think the way it is now, you have to reposition the thing, if I understand it right. And I may be wrong, but.
The effect was lost revenues, right? But I'm not talking about lost revenue. I'm talking about on the expense side. We have a budget where we are cutting positions, lowering costs, right, because of the pandemic. Otherwise, we wouldn't have made some of those cuts. So does that money then apply to the expense side to offset that? Revenues are what they are. They stay the same. They are what they are. That's my question.
No, my understanding of that question.
Well, then I don't understand one thing. I don't understand how it connects.
My understanding of that question, if I understand everything correct, there is some money that could be used for employees to maintain them. But one hundred percent of everything that they do throughout the day and the week has to be COVID-related. They can't work on anything else. And if you, if you hire and fill those positions, come December thirtieth, the funding ends, so you got to make a decision then. Are they going to go on the city payroll out of the general fund? Or are they going to be released because the funding has ended? So a position is only temporary in my mind because we don't have the funds to continue salaries.
Yeah, so I'm.
But yeah, the positions could be, some could be for COVID-related only issues.
Like the example he gave of the Economic Development Director position, where they just work on current businesses, help them get back to where they were. That's all COVID nineteen response kind of works, so you could apply the money there.
Till December the third.
Till December the third.
So let me ask.
But if there are other positions other than that one, right, that you're having to cut because they're, they're having to be taken out of the budget because you can't afford it because of the impact of what's happened, right, they're not covered. So my point is, this whole CARES thing lacks a lot of support on what's going on in the governmental sectors and the market, right, to try to, you know, support getting the economy back and getting people back. Because they're basically saying you can't use it for those other positions that are going away because otherwise you wouldn't have taken them away potentially. But you're having to because of what just happened. If this hadn't happened, you would not be seeing the cuts on some of these expense lines. That's a fact.
All right.
So why can't these monies be applied there? That's my question.
Well, I think that Congress has said they can't be applied. That's why they can't be applied.
I know, so I don't understand that. I don't understand that logic.
Well, that's something to have a discussion with their congressmen and senators about. But what you're talking about is you're saying cut the expense line. You say revenue stayed the same, but you're cutting expenses. Well, you can't do that. You got to have the balance budget. We can't have a million in revenue and forty-nine million in expenses.
Oh, I get that. I get that. That's, that's a response to that.
No.
Expenses are being reduced as a response to revenues going down.
Right.
That's what I'm.
But you said, that they have to equal. So when you equal, you're losing a position.
Yeah, but with the CARES money, if you're able to apply it that way, you could add it in as an additional federal revenue line item because it's, it's basically a CARES. it in as an additional federal revenue line item, because it's basically a CARES Act grant that you're getting extra funds, so you could add another million to that 49 to 50, and now you wouldn't have, the expense line would come up with...
That's exactly right. With, the exception is, it all has to be COVID-related. And we'll just say, you cannot take Economic Development and leave Economic Development the way Economic Development is situated now. He can no longer be, if we fund his position through CARES Act money, he cannot be Executive Director of IDA. That has nothing to do with COVID-19. His position would basically be re-titled to Community Business Response, whatever, Director, to COVID-19. And then we come up with a new job description of what that position needs to do over the next six months. Now, the hope is, and which I've talked about over time, we know our revenue lines we projected at 51 million this year. Now, you've seen $930,000 of the cuts in numbers when it comes to employment numbers. So, what we hope and what I've said, we've got to start adding those positions back, because we can't operate with some of those positions gone. So, what we hope, over time, we see this revenue line trend above what we projected. As we see that line trend above what we projected, then we make the determination out of the positions that have been cut and are not funded by CARES, or even if they are funded by CARES, how do we start funding them to begin with, starting December 30 of 2020? But the short answer is, if it's not COVID-related, we can't fund it with CARES money.
Mr. Eats, can I read one, two sentences from the actual guidance? Payroll and benefit costs associated with public employees who could have been furloughed or otherwise laid off, but who were instead repurposed to perform previously unbudgeted functions substantially dedicated to mitigating or responded to the COVID-19 public health emergency are covered. So, I think that answers the question, I think. That's straight from the guidance.
And so, for instance, you know, in the example of the Economic Development Director, we could repurpose that job to be something that's coronavirus-related, but there's no way, in my mind, to repurpose the aerobics instructor job to be coronavirus-related.
Correct.
So, some of these jobs, we could theoretically use this money for, figure something out, hold them in here until at least December 30. But some of them, there's no way to be able to go back.
That's correct.
And come up with a... And I know Mr. Wingard had said that 100% of the stuff would have to be coronavirus-related. On this slide that you're on, it says payroll expenses substantially dedicated to mitigating responding. So, define substantially. I mean, I know that's, like, what percentage is substanti-related?
Well, I can find plenty of case law that defines substantially, but in my mind, substantially means probably 95% of their job or more is dedicated to the COVID-19 response. You know, to me, it's not 51%. Because, at the end of the day, you've got to remember, these expenses are going to be audited, and they're going to look to see what that person was doing. And at the end of the day, if they find out that that person was not doing something substantially related to COVID-19, they're going to be asking for us to pay that back.
So, that brings up a question, not just with personnel, but we were just talking about grants and things. What kind of, do you have any sense of the reporting requirements and the burden it's going to be on the existing city staff to keep up with this? And I mean, that may be a temporary job just in and of itself, you know, to somebody to keep up with the reporting, so that at the end of the day, you can report back how the funds were used and make sure you're ready for the audit.
Well, I do believe it will place a burden on our staff. You know, Community Development will be down two people, is currently down the Community Development Director, plus the code enforcement at some point, based on the budget that's presented tonight, was no longer in the budget. So, to put this off on Community Development, I don't know is the appropriate response. Economic Development in the budget you all have tonight is no longer part of the budget. However, my thoughts would be, you repurpose that position to respond to businesses for COVID-related 19 items, and then you push the reporting requirements and verifying all the information off on this, on the, what was the Economic Development Director. And we may need another person, I just don't, I don't know how many businesses will apply for this.
But they haven't given you any sense of what you need to be?
No, I mean, it's basically up to us as the type of parameters and the reporting requirements.
Okay.
Well, I think Mr. Hartley made a great point there, that if this is going to, if this could potentially have a position to help city staff through December 30, because of applications and everything else, and I'm excited about the grant money for small businesses. And I mean, I believe that we should be focusing on the businesses that were hit the hardest. Just an example, your hairstylist and barber shops, they got shut down cold turkey. They still have lights, they still have rent, they still have payments, they have their expenditures. And with them being self-employed, they don't qualify for unemployment. So, it's that type of business there that got hit the hardest. So, with the grant money, I'm going to ask that we set up a committee, you know, that looks at the detrimental impact that some of these businesses truly occurred. I mean, there was a lot of things closed down that had no rhyme or reason as to why this one has to close and this one can stay open. I mean, it's more that government picking winners than losers. So, on the flip side of this, if there's grant money available for the ones that truly lost, they should be the first in line to receive these funds.
Well, and what our plan is, is once we develop this plan, as to how these grant monies will be expended, we would bring that to council, get your all's approval, ask you all to tweak it, make any suggestions that you all want to make to it, so that we can implement it, and not only do it with your all's blessing and input, but do it with the committee's blessing and input, so that we're all on the same team and help and move these businesses forward.
Okay, well, I think we need to expedite this and move this forward as quick as possible, get the word out to the community, and those that got devastated and hit the hardest is the ones we need to put in front of the line for some grant funding.
All right. So, that'll do on this CARES Act discussion, so we're going to move on. We've been kind of hitting around the corners at it, so we'll go ahead and get into first reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2021. Staff report.
Counsel, in the budget, I think there's a new budget that's been presented and given to you all. There are three changes that we made to the budget, a total of $23,422, and that was simply due to an oversight. The Fire Department had a lease payoff this fiscal year of $7,706. Fleet Maintenance also had a lease payoff of $15,716. That was a total of $23,422. Those funds have now been allocated to the contingency fund for this budget, and you can see that in this budget. How, you know, tonight's budget, we have presented the budget on May 12. We've had discussion, two-on-twos with each of you in regards to this budget, and at this point, it's ready for a first reading.
All right, thank you. So, no one has signed up for public comment, so I'm going to look for a motion in a second for first reading of the budget by caption only.
I move that we have the first reading of the budget by caption only.
One second.
Motion for Mr. Farnham, and second for Mr. Hartley. Counsel discussion.
Well, I'm just going to say this was a unique year, to say the least. But with everything that's been said and done, I believe that this budget is in line. I mean, it's 5% over our expenditures. I mean, that's huge. And I think that this area was blessed that we didn't get hit any harder with the COVID-19 than we did. I mean, we escaped that. But you never know what the future's going to hold, so you have to be ready for some curveballs. You cannot plan for everything, you cannot foresee everything, but it only stands to reason that you keep your finances intact and healthy, to where when something does happen, you're not caught completely off-guard. We had a great year last year, and that helped sustain us and push us through and get us to where we're at today, but we got a plan for the future. And I believe that this budget does that. It's not perfect, there never has been a perfect budget. We're all sitting here tonight, and I promise you that if we could change something in it, we would, you know, but the conversation goes on forever. It's strong, I'm happy with it, and I think they've done a good job, the city. And I'm going to vote for this to go through, the way it stands, because we all know that come July 2, it could all change again. And we're going to be in here talking about what we're going to have to do to survive that. So, but as it stands right now, good job.
Thank you, sir. We didn't take this budget season lightly, I can assure you of that. Lost plenty of sleep trying to figure out how to make this budget work for the city in a most responsible manner, so that we can continue the services that we provide to citizens. I feel like we've done it. Is it the budget I would have liked to have presented? No. But it's, you know, I think it's a solid budget, and one that we can work with, at least for the short term, until we see revenues turn around. I do want to reiterate one of Mr. Wingard's points that he made. We don't know what the future holds, and only thing anyone needs to do is go online to the Virginia Department of Health coronavirus page, and you can look at each region of Virginia as to how the coronavirus is impacting each region. Every region in Virginia is on a decline in the number of coronavirus cases being reported, except Southwest Virginia. Southwest Virginia right now is higher than it was late April, as far as number of new daily cases. What that's from, I couldn't tell you, but there has been an increase, and you can see it's a steady increase of Southwest Virginia cases. Now, you know, it's not thousands of cases or even hundreds of cases, but it's still an increase of cases that we weren't having previously, and we're in a little bit worse shape right now than we were at the end of April, first part of May, as far as number of new daily cases. So, that gives me concern when I'm looking forward and I'm looking into October and November, what's it look like for us?
I mean, I'll just say, I appreciate y'all's work, because I know y'all were about ready to present, and we were starting to get into workshops, a budget that would look totally different from this, and the tone of the conversation would have been totally different. But y'all put together a budget that's balanced, you know, it's not, I think all of us agree, it's not anything anybody wants, but I think as Mr. Wingard said, it gives you a jumping off point for the future, and we don't know what the future holds. I was reading something the other day, it was talking about driving through fog. You can't see the destination nor the road while you're driving through fog, and that's kind of what this is like. Nobody really knows which way it's going to go. Hopefully, things improve. Hopefully, y'all made very conservative estimates, and we get lucky, and some of the things we don't like, we can put back in, or through some other sources, like we talked about tonight, the CARES or CDGB, maybe we can make some tweaks to it. But then again, we could be sitting here three months, six months from now, and talking about other actions we're going to have to take that none of us really want to either. So, I think this is probably a good place to start, and, you know, like most years, when we get to this point, we've had a lot of conversation, and we get the budget behind us, and then we kind of move forward. I think this year, we're just starting a conversation. I think this budget's going to keep going on and on and on, as things change and we have to tweak it throughout the year. So, that's kind of how I look at this, and we'll just see where it goes.
Well, I want to start out with reading a letter that was in my mailbox. This is from a citizen concerning the budget, so I feel like it's appropriate to read this. This is May 14, 2020. To whom make concern? I'm writing in response to the article in the Bristol-Harrah Courier yesterday, May 13. I'm completely dismayed at the consideration to cut three positions from our already understaffed police department. On any given day, there are many, many more police calls than fire ambulance calls, but the Fire Department would only lose one position. Where's the logic there? Social Services to lose four positions? Question mark. What about their support to our underprivileged citizens and families? Question mark. Parks and Rec will lose two and a half positions, Economic Development one position. Why not cut some higher-paying administrative positions? Question mark. Why not force retirement on some employees that are virtually ineffective and should have retired long ago? Question mark. How are you going to lure the businesses when you can't or won't provide public safety services to them once they're here? Question mark. What about the city jail? Question mark. Are you aware that when they have an issue, they call the police department over to handle it? Question mark. Just last week, I heard the police department dispatched to the jail due to someone beating on the jail door. Your jailers sounded as though they were too scared to answer. Does that sound like someone you should put your tax dollars to? Question mark. I've also heard the police department dispatched to the jail numerous times to handle issues I would think the jail staff should handle. I had a brush piled in front of my home for five weeks with no pickup. If that's an issue, cut those positions. I'm still paying the same on my taxes, but not receiving the services anyway. I understand the loss of income, but I am sickened by our city government wanting to make cuts to public safety. They are essential, cut elsewhere. I'm only one taxpayer, but I know others feel the same. I love living in Bristol, Virginia, but I have to move to the Tennessee side or the county to receive adequate public safety protection. I will. I'm a supporter of the casino coming in, but why in the blah, 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 would they want to if you can't provide public safety to us now? Public is, why is public safety the first cut offered up? Why would any business want to come to our city? Question mark. Please consider cuts elsewhere. And so, that's, you know, one citizen. So, I've been probably one of the tougher budget discussions that y'all have had, probably, I typically am. It's because I've been through tougher budget discussions through my career, right? I mean, I've been through stuff that would light your hair on fire, right? You'd want to just throw up and leave the room. So, we weren't where we need to be this year from last year's budget. We overspent last year by a lot, trying to warn this city. The economy's going to come down, we just don't know when and by how much. Well, it came down, it came down a lot more than anybody thought. So, you can't ever expect things to be positive. You have to always commit to the worst of the worst. Budget for the worst and hope for the best, so you don't get caught, like Warren Buffett would say, when a tide goes out, you know who's skinny dipping. You know who was prepared when the tide went out, because they're the ones with the bathing suits on. So, we've got to get into that mentality. We don't have that mentality yet. We still don't understand in the city what it means to burn the furniture to pay the light bill. I mean, we have been walking on eggshells. We've kind of been lucky more than good over the last three to four years. So, a lot about what's in this budget was hard work, it was good. I saw the cuts. I was very pleased with the way the estimates were put in, the way the cuts were made, but what I was disappointed with is some of the other things that I saw in there that really could have been cut also, right? I mentioned the Sheriff's Department. We're going the wrong way. 1.2 million's in this budget, right? We need to go the other way for jail inmates. I propose 600,000 or 700,000 to put the incentive on this city to try to get these inmates in a program out of jail, so we're not just spending the money to house inmates. Well, that didn't happen. The other thing was the Commonwealth Attorney, right? Budgets are going up and up and up with no turn in sight, right? It's been up 150, 200,000 over the last three to four years. It's the wrong direction. Everybody else is having to go the other way, right? Commonwealth Attorney needs to figure that out. All the position cuts, yep. Some were probably warranted last year, shouldn't even been talked about this year. Some were in there because of what happened, the Corona-19. Okay, I get that. But we had an emergency fund we set aside, and I was staunch against that, because I didn't feel like we needed that much money in there because of other issues we had. But when we got 1.4 million sitting in an emergency... But when we got 1.4 million sitting in an emergency account, this is an emergency. We're in a state of emergency. What other emergency are we going to have that would not warrant those monies to be pulled out to do some things that we need to do to salvage, say, police positions and some others when that money's sitting there for an emergency? I don't understand. City attorney, you've been doing this for too long, right? One job. We said that was temporary. I said, this is the budget cycle. We've got to get a city attorney's position established. This man cannot do both jobs simultaneously. It's killing him, you can tell, but he's doing a good job with what he's got. Now's the time for a city attorney. Well, we've got the money to do that. It wasn't in the budget. I wanted that in the budget. And just in general, the staff cuts, they were, I was happy to see some staff cuts because I thought they, again, should, some of those should have been made a while ago. But some of them I didn't understand. So it was a very confusing set of staff cuts that I saw. Taking travel out had to happen. Taking some of the trainings and the professional services out had to happen. So while there's a lot of good stuff, and in general, you know, I'm okay with where we are with the budget, you know, I've got some real issues with those line items. And so I'm, I'm not a yes vote right at this moment. I'm sitting here scratching my head because I think we can do a lot better than this as a city. We've got the responsibility to manage the taxpayer monies a lot more conservative than what we are, right? We cannot count our eggs before they hatch. We still do not know in the next two to three years what revenue streams are coming. It could get worse, folks, in the next six months and not better. It could go the other way. There are manufacturing companies on the verge right now of letting massive people go and cutting back. They have, they have had no revenues and no inventory streams coming from supply base for two to four months now, right? And so they are on the verge of collapse. So don't think it's just going to magically get better. It may get worse. So you've got to be prepared for that. You've got to be prepared that it could be worse than you expect, and I don't think we are. I think we're taking it kind of, okay, that's what we think we can get away with right now. I would have cut it deeper, honestly. I would have made much deeper cuts. I would have had another million out of this budget at least.
Can you make those recommendations because we have not heard those from you?
Well, 500,000 was the sheriff's department. That was a half a million.
And we had a conversation on Thursday, I think, myself, you, and Ms. Bradlin. And, you know, what it's going to take is communication amongst council members to come to a consensus on this budget.
I understand that.
And I don't think as of today, you've reached out to council members to discuss your wants in this budget. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's happened.
Well, I'll tell you this. Here's the, here's the way it happens around here. The communications with this council have been shut down. This council doesn't want to hear input, okay? There's been input on emails and stuff, been given a lot, but it's like, well, thank you for the note, but you know, by the way, that doesn't make any sense. I have heard that more than once, okay? So when you continue to hear those kinds of things, right, you, you get to the point where what's, what's the purpose of really communicating to the details when it's not going to be stood? And one of those people was in this room, and you were in the room when I had a lot of these conversations, so it didn't have to be communicated again, right? Some of these things I just mentioned, right? I mean, you were in, I mean, we're all in here, right? So, so, you know, I hear what you're saying, but that's not the whole reason I'm having this discussion.
And I understand that, and I get where you're coming from. What I'm trying to say, and I've preached it for three years, this council has to communicate. I don't care if you hate one another. I don't care if you love one another. Communication is key. And if you feel strongly about cutting the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, if you feel strongly about adding a city attorney, if you feel strongly about cutting the sheriff's department, pick up the phone and attempt to communication. And that goes for everybody here. That goes for everybody, and I'm not just singling you out. You're the one that started the discussion tonight. But it takes three to pass a budget. And right now, based on what I've heard, four agree with this budget. Is it perfect? No. And I can also tell you, when it comes to preparing for the worst, we are prepared to deal with the worst. The next time we see an economic downturn, we immediately stop expenses, just like we did on March 13th at 8:13 a.m. I sent an email that morning saying, no more expenses unless absolutely necessary. And I think what you will see as this year progresses, that that decision made a significant impact on this current year's fiscal budget. We are prepared to make those decisions when we need to. I proposed a furlough policy in front of this council. It wanted to be tabled. I don't know why, but that furlough policy, like I stood right here in this same spot and said, was a tool in the tool belt to use in the event we had to use it. I don't have a furlough policy right now to this day. I know Mr. Wingard wanted it on tonight's meeting. I spoke with him about it, and I said, based on what's on tonight's agenda, do you care if we put this off until late June or July? He didn't have a problem with that, so I'll be bringing it back up probably in July for council to consider. But, I mean, those are the tools that we need. More importantly, we have policies in place, and I think our policies, by us following the policies that we have put in place, you were on the finance committee, Mr. Hartley's on the finance committee, Mr. Osborne's been on it. Those policies that you all have come up with have put us in the position as to where we are now, better off today than we were on June 30th, 2017. We had $7 million in the bank on June 30th, 2017. This city has been in existence since 1892, and this city had $7 million in the bank on June 30th of 2017. Prior to that, they were borrowing five figures to make operating expenses. So the policies that you all have come up with, the policies that we implement, have put us in a 10 times better position than we could ever be in a very, very short period of time, and I think that goes to show through the credit ratings. I mean, we are doing what we need to do to put this city on financial footing for the future. And I'm not disagreeing with you on a lot of the comments you said tonight, but what it takes is, and I've preached it, is communication. I don't know if you five need to go on a retreat and spend a weekend together to start loving one another or what the case is, but you five have got to talk. I don't want to go on that retreat, by the way. But you all have got to talk. Pick up the phone. Be willing to put yourself out there. And if someone hangs up on you or tells you thanks but no thanks, hey, guess what? There's another day. There's another issue that's going to come up. Pick up that phone again and say, hey, Anthony, I know we didn't get to talk on the last one. I know you didn't agree with me, and you hung up on me, but guess what? We've got another issue today. Let's try to get this resolved. What can we do to meet in the middle? And that will, I'm telling you guys, communication will make a team rise from the bottom to the top like that, and we've got to communicate as one. And if we don't communicate as one, all we have here is disjointed discussions that get us nowhere.
Well, I'll say this. Unhealthy discussions get you healthy, and we got there through those years you're talking about by a lot of arguments. This, this chamber was full. There was hair flying. There was, there was people bounding on the desk if they're pounding stuff. Those were, those were tough discussions that went on for about a year and a half that got those budgets and that money where you're talking about. Well, we went backwards. We're not having those anymore. Because my philosophy is this, you have those discussions in an open forum. You don't have them on the phone behind closed doors because this public needs to hear what we're talking about.
I agree.
This public needs to know how their taxpayer dollars are being spent, every penny. And this crap of calling people on the phone and saying, do you think about this? That's a bunch of crap. It needs to be done right in here so they hear the truth. And if you don't like the truth, then plug, you know, just put the things in your ear cavity. But you need to have the discussion in here. You know, businesses have it in the boardroom, and it peels the paint off the wall. You know, you want to go out and throw up, like I said, because they're tough discussions. You don't know if you're going to get fired five minutes later. But that's what gets you as a team to get to the point where you can manage the business and you know what you're doing. Without those discussions, you're just dusting stuff under the carpet. And if you can't have those discussions in an open forum like this, then why do we even do this? That's the problem I have with government. You've got to have these discussions. That's the only way you get better.
Well, I will just say, from a professional standpoint, the discussions that we had in the spring of 17 did not put the city in a good light. You can ask anybody in the community. They thought it looked terrible. Regardless of what the outcome, even though the outcome was good, at the end of the day, it looked bad. And we are a city that's trying to attract new business, keep the businesses we have, attract new residents, and having some of those couch-burning discussions in public is not necessarily the best place to have those discussions. Do they need to happen? Sure, they need to happen, and I'll be more than happy to go toe-to-toe with anybody any day of the week.
Well, that's just a difference in philosophy, that's all.
And I get that, and there's nothing wrong with it. But see, here we go. Don't cut it off because it's a difference in philosophy. I mean, I'm not sitting here trying to, but it's the discussions that we have to have. And you're, you're looking at me when you're talking about the discussions. The discuss, you all are the governing body. You all have to have those discussions, not me.
Ms. Reed, could I add a clarification on the inmate housing?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify. Councilman Mumpower, inmate housing in the recommended budget, the department request was 1.2 million. It was adjusted to 1 million. I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm sorry, yeah, it was 1 million, and I wanted 600,000 or 700,000.
I just wanted to clarify.
All right, I'm done. You've heard my piece. I'm good. Let's roll.
Okay. Well, I'll say this. So I'm a lot less excited about voting for this budget this year than I was for the budget we did last year for obvious reasons. There's a, there's a lot that I'm not excited about, and I don't think most folks are excited about, you know, with these, with these position cuts. And even, you know, with the cuts to, to our tourism, you know, to our outside agencies, you know, because, you know, it's kind of a double-edged sword. We have a drop in revenue, but to get the revenue back, we need more people to come back in here and spend money, and it's hard to get them to come back in here and spend money if we don't, if we don't market ourselves. So, so I understand the, the problem with that. I, I have a specific problem, and we've discussed it ad nauseam, you know, behind closed doors and in previous budget discussions last year with, with cutting public safety. You know, I think that's been well documented, that that's not something that I'm, not something that flies me, that's not something I'm cool with. So that's a major issue for me. So I, I would like to say, just going back to what we've just discussed, I don't think that a lot of the stuff that we've done, I don't think it's been a case of, you know, us being lucky versus us being good. I think there's been a lot of hard work by the staff and by this council, by these five people, and by the membership as it was composed before I got here. You know, there was a lot of, a lot of hard work that got us, you know, to a good place even before, before this happened. So I think that's a testament to, to the people that came before me and to these people here that things could be a lot worse with this budget than what it is. Certainly not good. It's not great, but it'll do. And I'm fully committed, and I believe that, from what I've heard, I believe several of us are, to finding a way to look at some of these other avenues to go back and address these job losses. You know, I can't, I cannot guarantee that we will be able to save every one of these jobs on this list, but I can guarantee that we're going to try and get as many as we can in a way that we can, we can do it responsibly and keep as many people as we can. So, so again, this is not by any means the budget I wanted to see. I was actually, I think I was the only one who was suggesting before all this coronavirus stuff started to hire more police and firefighters. So this is certainly the opposite direction of where I wanted us to be, but I understand why we're in this direction. So I don't love it, but this is the hand we've been dealt, so this is what we're going to work with, I believe. Is there any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Osborne, the only thing I respond to is, you know, I understand your concerns in regards to outside agencies. I understand your concerns in regards to public safety, especially public safety, knowing that there is a potential for a resort casino to come in the city in a very short period of time with a number of visitors that will be here. I do think it's important that we look at public safety and how we address those issues to make sure that we keep the public safe and keep visitors safe. But I'll, I'll leave everybody with this last note, and I think it's something the city had forgotten over the past 40 years. We have to take care of ourself. We have to take care of our own house before we take care of other people's houses. And I think over the past three years that I'm aware of, we've done a good job of taking care of our own house in the midst of this pandemic, in the midst of an economic downturn. We continue to take care of our own house, and we still have to do that so that we can be prepared for that next economic downturn, so that we protect this house, and everybody else also has to learn to stand on their own two feet too. But most importantly, my job is to protect the city, to protect the taxpayers' money, and to make sure that we do it wisely, and I think you all agree with me on that. And I think this budget does that. Does everybody agree on this budget? No, because there's things that people want to cut, there's things that people want to add, but at the end of the day, we'll take care of our own house in a manner that I think right now is responsible and that we can always adjust as the year goes on, either up or down.
All right.
Yeah, I want to say one more thing, um, comment on, you know, living within, living within our means. You know, we're, we're living in a revenue line right now that's, that's an artificially inflated line. You know, we brought, we brought that tax revenue base up on purpose, real estate taxes, right? From $1.9 to $1.17, right? It is not intended to stay there. Never my intention, wasn't the intention of that city council, and it wasn't the intention of the citizens. So we're now budgeting to a level that these citizens don't want us to budget at. They want us to come back to where we should live within our means. Our means as a city of this size is $1.8, $1.9. Not approaching Chesapeake, Virginia, or Virginia Beach, or Chesterfield County that has those high real estate tax rates. That's not who Bristol is. So if you want to attract people to come here to buy homes, you got to get back to that $1.7, $1.8 where we belong, right? As a small city. You got to pull back the other taxes, but we're not doing that. We're taxing and keeping the tax rate high, and we just find a way to fill it up with the expenses. And when I get irritated, that's what I'm irritated about. We're wasting taxpayer dollars when we don't need to because that tax rate needs to come down. And the only way we get there is to start buckling up at the expense line and start living a tou, a tough life. Then you can start pulling the real estate taxes down, the property taxes and all that, all that goes with it.
Mr. Mumpower, the reason that those real estate taxes were increased, and I was here, I mean, me and Mr. Hubbard, we did that with the intention of setting $1 million aside for our debt, and we've been doing that, and, and that's part of the plan, and we still haven't got over the spike of the debt yet. We've got, what is it, 2023, 2024? We've been able to have, just like tonight, talking about, you know, we could pull some money out of, of reserve that we set aside specifically for the debt. I agree, those are too high, but that was done specifically to deal with that issue, and it's given us some time to, to deal with that debt. You know, at some point, yeah, those need to come down, but right now, we got to get over that hump because that is probably the biggest challenge that this city is facing and will continue to face until we can get over that hump and know that we have certainty that we can satisfy those obligations. You know, I just, that's why it was done, though. It wasn't done willy-nilly, and it wasn't done, you know, it was done with a lot of thought, and there was a plan, and in fact, it helped, you know, not only to, to get us off the tan, but then to set us aside, and we've been very successful in that.
And, and I'll, I'll comment to that. I didn't say it was done willy-nilly. It was done because it was needed to be done, and it took the unfunded balance, which was down to four or five million at the time, and got it up to the threshold we're at today, which that's the reason the credit agencies increased our credit. That's what got us back in the position we got. But that, that has been passed now. Now, you're, you're in a position where you are above your threshold on the unfunded balance level. balance level. You are at a level where you can start talking about reducing real estate tax rates. But you can't do that if you keep expensing, the expense side to fill that bucket up. Right? That's my point. You'll never, so it was never intended for that extra 10 cents or whatever to be there forever. Did you intend it for it to be there forever? The intent was not forever. It was to get us back. So when, when is it up? Because we need to get back to a dollar eight. That's what the citizens are saying, not me. You couldn't, you know, they're, they're, they're saying, my real estate taxes have went up. My trash has gone up. My property tax has gone up. The only thing they've seen in the last three to four years is up, up, up. And then people talk about the, the meals tax is too high. Guys, open your ears up. Everybody's talking about it. Well, if you get back to where we need to be, it's at a much lower level. But you can't get there without the expenses down.
Mr. Mumpower, I don't disagree with you that we have a very high real estate tax rate, and I don't disagree with it, we need to cut it, you know, in the near future. But I don't think that that's necessarily a discussion for a time where we're about to, about to vote on the first reading of a budget that we've just had a massive drop in, in revenue, you know, a couple million dollar cut in revenue. I don't think that this is the time to talk about cutting real estate tax. As you can see from what appears to be a number, if we were to cut from 117 to 108, that's about a million dollars less than we would have right now. So I do, I do agree with you that we need to cut the real estate tax, but I do not agree with you that it needs to happen now or in the next budget year or anything. I think we need to wait until we see some expanded revenues coming in from this, from this resort and casino before we would even think about trying to cut this. And as Mr. Hartley said, we have got some massive debt payments coming due very shortly. So I, you can scoff if you want or look away. It's a fact that we have to make those payments in a couple fiscal years, and we've had a big drop in revenue right now. So, you know, we can have this discussion at another point in open forum if you would like, but I don't think that that is going to serve any good purpose this evening.
I just want the public to know, if we're going to have a discussion in public, we're, and we have the same current revenues that we have right now, without any additional revenue, we've got to cut 972,000 out of this budget. I would encourage each and every one of you all to go through this budget line by line, and you tell me where to cut 972,000, and I'll cut it tomorrow. But I'll tell you where you're going to get to. You're going to be laying off at least 20 people to get there, if not more. And when you lay off 20 people, guess what? Services decline. Guess what? Your all's phones are going to start ringing because something's not getting done quick enough, something, a road is not fixed, there's some issue. So when you're cutting people as a city, you're cutting services. There's not a million dollars left in this budget to cut at this point that we can operate on. And that may not be what people want to hear, but this is exactly where we're at. 972,000 without additional revenue, you're cutting people. So if, I'll be more than happy, whoever wants to tell me how to cut 972,000 out of this without impacting services to the city, then do it. If you're willing to impact services to the city, we can do that as well, but be ready for the phone calls. My job is to do what three of you want me to do. And if you can find 972,000, let's cut it.
All right. Thank you very much. So hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Mumpower.
No.
Wingard.
Yes.
Osborne.